Let's begin with our Board of Business first. Do I have a motion to reconvene at regular meeting?
No motion.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Please. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Teague?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Yes, regular session reconvene at 7:04. At this time, we would all please stand and we're going to do our pledge of allegiance. Okay, Dr. John Green, would you please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on our nation under God, universal, liberty, and justice for all.
This is fine, I think it has to end.
Good evening and welcome everybody. It is nice to see our LTHS families here this evening for a very special recognition for seniors who have earned the distinction of Illinois State Scholars. How about a round of applause for our students? My name is John Green, a principal here at East Campus, and I'm very proud to announce our students here this evening who have earned the recognition of Illinois State Scholars. We are pleased to introduce and recognize LTHS students who have been named an Illinois State Scholar. Illinois State Scholars earn this distinction through a weighted scholar score that includes class rank, grade point average, and SAT score compared to all other students in the state of Illinois. This year, 118 LTHS students have been designated a 2024 Illinois State Scholar by the Illinois Student Assistance Commission. This resolution is recognizing the accomplishments of the Illinois State Scholars from the class of 2024. Whereas the following students have excelled in the state of Illinois academic competition, have been named Illinois State Scholars by the Illinois Student Assistance Commission and thereby have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their families, school, and communities. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School, District 205, Will County, Illinois, that the following students from the class of 2024 are hereby recognized for their outstanding academic achievement in the Illinois State Ashley Andra. Ella Klein. Emma Check. Allison Dulo. Gabriella Lane. Madison Lynch. McKenna Orko. Elena Rangans. And Natalie Zudrow. How about one more round of applause for our Illinois State Scholars class of 2024?
All right. Oh my gosh, the crowd is big. All right, does need a motion to accept those resolutions?
No motion.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, on behalf of the Board of Education, congratulations again to the students and of course to the parents also. We are very proud of them and I just want to, let's just give them a round of applause I guess then we will have to go back to our regular meeting and they say this is it. All right, again, congratulations and thank you for coming. I guess then we will have to go back to our board meeting and say this is it. All right, again, congratulations and thank you for coming. Position for our secretary since Dr. Shimon Rogers is not here and I appoint, um, after, I'm sorry, Ms. Luanne Johnson. I just need a motion for that. It's been motioned by Mr. Tease and second by Mr. Travis. Roll call. Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Johnson? Tease?
Yes.
Yes.
We do, we have, we're gonna, just for everybody gathered, we're gonna go off agenda tonight. And have Button Sensei introduce our Japanese visitors to everybody, really to the public as well. We are so fortunate. Why don't you come on down and, and you know, have a seat, join us at the table. Carla, why don't you join our guests? And just as they, as they come down, can we give these folks a big round of applause? And, and as everybody comes on down and just joins us for a few minutes at the table. We have a very unique opportunity. There are two things that the Board of Education approved this year. They were international trips and really just embracing the idea that, you know, our board, 40 hours of community service, and embracing the idea that global competency is also service. And two things were approved this year. One, a service trip to the Dominican Republic that just ended. One of our board members, Ms. Osay, was on that trip and Mr. Dusterhoff was one of the administrative chaperones. As Mrs. Kishline said, always says, "Nothing happens without teachers," and that was Dreya Quintinar. And she was really instrumental with that. But we are so lucky because Carla Button, inspirational, again to Mrs. Kishline's point. And then our friends from the Yamate Senior High School in Yokohama, Japan. They found us. They, they came to us and wanted to do an exchange with us. And it just so happened that our guests are here. You are here. We have a board meeting and we thought we would just take a few minutes for Carla to introduce them. None of you can leave without porterware. I have to give you some porterware before you leave. So I'm gonna give my two colleagues some porterware when you, when you're finished introducing yourself properly. But, Mrs. Button, can you take over and introduce, you know, why don't we, you know, you introduce our guests and then we'll introduce ourselves as well.
So we have our two chaperones here. So we have Rinya Onara and then we have Hiroki Eto Nagono. So in their family, Yamate Gakuin Junior or Senior High School.
Anything, anything on your mind?
Thank you for introducing and I'm afraid of disturbing your meeting.
No, not at all.
So, thank you very much for welcoming Yamate Gakuin High School into your district and homes. It's so wonderful that we could start an exchange program with Lockport and this is the beginning of relationship with, between Lockport and Yamate Gakuin High School. We hope that this bond will continue for many years to come. And hope that, also hope that these two weeks will be a wonderful experience for our students, in the lives of our students. We are looking forward to welcoming many Lockport students and staffs to Yamate Gakuin this summer. And hope so this exchange program makes us really understand each other. Finally, our mutual understanding leads this world to the peace we hope. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Do we have a small gift for the district?
Oh, okay, that would be you.
This is for the district.
On behalf of the Board of Education.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
And of course, we want to seal the bonds and to seal the bonds, you have to, and I have the sizes. You have to have some porterware.
Large?
Large. Medium. And, and small. So. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Being here, thanks for joining us. We're giving our guests a round of applause. While they're standing, can we just introduce ourselves at the board table? Ms. Osay.
I'm Chelsea Osay. I'm a student board member.
I, I'm Victoria Del Ponte. I'm a board member.
Luanne Johnson, school board member.
Lance Tease, board member?
Veronica Shaw, Board Vice President.
Captain Vence, Record and Secretary.
Lucian Des, Board Member Des.
Michael Travis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks so much. Great to see you.
Thanks for coming out.
And as we tell all of our guests at the front end, nobody has to stay.
Good night. Dr. McBride, do we get to go?
You're a board member. You know, you apply. To Japan. I am actually the administrative chaperone.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, so, so it's gonna be a nice return. You know, I did a Fulbright experience in Japan, so. Great. It would be great if you went, you know.
Do you guys, are you guys gonna Duolingo a little bit of Japan so you can get around?
Maybe.
The issue in Japan is everybody speaks such good English.
Oh, if you go into the, I heard if you go into the countryside, that's not the case though.
That is not.
So you need to stay in the city, otherwise you're gonna get lost.
All right, going back to our board meeting. Do I have a motion to accept Robert Beach as the Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction as presented?
So move.
And before we vote, if we could have Dr. Johnson just spend a few minutes introducing Mr. Beach. So you can have a seat or you can, you can do it standing, however it's your world, Dr. Johnson.
All right, I guess I'll stand right here.
Stand or say, you can come on, come on down.
All right, so I am here to recommend Mr. Robert Beach for the Assistant Principal for Curriculum Instruction for Lockport High School. We had a phenomenal turnout for candidacy. We had about almost 30 applications, 22 interviews in round one, nine in round two, and then we had three in the final round. And part of that final round, our candidates had to, again, meet with the panel for a third time and then had to present to us just what, you know, what they would do in their first semester as the new Assistant Principal. And so we're excited because Mr. Beach knocked it out the park. He is student-centered. He really cares about the students of Lockport. He is an alum. One of the things that we love learning about Mr. Beach is that he is a lifelong learner. So number one, he's been a porter forever. He has been in education for about 16 years and 15 have been spent as a social studies teacher, as a counselor. You know, he has done work with seed facilitating. He also is a co-sponsor for the Student Equity Advisory Council. He is an alum of Iowa University.
That's right. Go Hawks.
Yes, he's also an alum of Olivet Nazarene and the American College University. And one of the things that we thought, wow, he really is a lifelong learner. Just a couple of weeks ago, he was endorsed in EL. And so he is a candidate who truly believes in learning and growing and doing what's right for kids. He sees our kids as having multiple pathways that they can take. And so we're very proud and excited to bring him on to the team. And so again, I am recommending Mr. Robert Beach for the Assistant Principal of Curriculum Instruction. Some, one more thing, I forgot. Some fun facts, just so you all know. One, he's very humble. He was a Division One track star. And he ran against many, many fast folks in the world. He also is Chicago fan, so he's all things Chicago, teams, Bears, Cubs, White Sox, I won't hold that against him, Blackhawks. And finally, what I learned just recently is that he does have a love of karaoke as much as I do. So we're excited. Oh, Dr. McBride, I saw it in your heart. So, yes. So we have to now start thinking about what are gonna be our duets, quartets, whatever we gotta do, but we're real excited for Robert. Yeah, so we're making a recommendation for Mr. Beach.
With this, with our motion. So it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis. Roll call. Travis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tease?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Yes. And then, Mr. Beach, congratulations.
Who's joining you here?
Can we have the words for Mr. Beach?
Oh, of course we can, you know.
Just wanted to say thanks. As Dr. Johnson said, the interview process was intense. And I'm happy to be the top candidate coming out of the process. So looking forward to transitioning to the new role next year. And then special thanks to my mother, Sharice, my nephew, Elijah, my two kids, Landon and Leila, and my brother, Olive. Thank you.
Yeah, right on. It didn't happen, it didn't happen Beach family without a, without a picture. So everybody's gotta get into the fun, right?
Turn this way.
And a fun fact about Mr. Beach, his middle name is McBride. So play with that for a minute. I'm very serious. His name is Robert McBride Beach.
Your mama's picture. All right, yes.
Sorry, I know you guys are busy today. No, it's gotta happen. Mr. Beach, we prefer if everybody's up there. Yeah, you gotta mark the moment.
All right, do you want me to take the pictures of you all? I can use your phone. Thank you and welcome. Come on down. All right, I'll take a couple.
You have a good side.
You have no bad side.
All right, good job.
Oh, now you're, now you're, come on, come on. That one's gotta go out.
That is a really wonderful picture. You're gonna love those, yes.
And the Beach family don't fail, it's your only obligation. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Moving on to our reports, student government.
Welcome.
Hello. Okay, I'll start then. So as I'm sure you all know, the juniors are taking the SAT tomorrow. I'm just, one final push. I just, we had to get these tests over with and then there's finals and it's gonna go really fast, but it's it's a really hard couple of months. I know I said this at last meeting, but it's just really, these months are, they're tough. Especially with SAT tomorrow, lots of studying, lots of preparing for this day. I'm very anxious about it.
Remind again which one of you are juniors?
I'm a junior.
Three of us, with Geona, but she's not here.
I believe in you, all right? Everybody on camera believes in you too.
Yeah, just lots of SAT prep and just keep going.
So I'd like to put out, there's a lot of opportunities for the students as of right now, as of student elections. So we got student government, so our role as executive board, we are holding elections right now, which, you know, is a good opportunity for the students, you know, to communicate with the board members and as well as, you know, on behalf of all the other students. So that's a good opportunity as well as So that's a good opportunity as well as Board of Education, um, student board members. You guys know about that option, that you guys, you know, go through that process and everything. As well as NHS, National Honor Society, they have, um, different positions into that to where students can get, really get engaged in, um, day-to-day activities as well as, you know, just the student body representatives of, you know, Lockport. So those are really good options for students to get engaged.
We also have prom this weekend, um, which I'm personally excited for because it's my senior year. So that's, um, fun for the seniors. I'm definitely gonna use, since I have the next two days off for testing, I'm gonna use these two days to like, get ready and like, you know, mentally prepare for it. Yeah, and then, um, we also have AP testing coming up in the next couple of weeks, which can also cause stress, like the state testing. Especially since I am in two classes and then Gianna, who's not here, she's in four. So we're definitely feeling the stress right now, like, okay, like it's time to study for those and like, it's a good opportunity for college credit.
Um, I'd like to add on to what she said. Um, I'm Josh and I'm in three AP classes and, um, I just find it really helpful how like, I have some classes where teachers would post like a, like a calendar up until the date, uh, AP test. And like, it'll tell you what to study and I just find that really helpful. And, um, another thing I find really helpful is, uh, the review sessions for the AP classes. I just think it helps, uh, like, get all your information refreshed before the AP test. What other, one other topic I'd like to talk about is, uh, the Japanese exchange students. And I just think it's, um, it's really nice to see them, like I've even had myself, I've had two classes where they've been in there. And I just think it's wonderful to see them enjoy viewing our school and like how we run it, maybe compared to how they run their school.
Any questions on behalf of the board?
Have you talked to any of the Japanese exchange students?
After school, I did.
What has been the most surprising thing for them so far?
I was asking them like if they knew some certain artists that are like really popular here and it was just surprising that they didn't know who they were.
You said they did know who they were?
They didn't.
I talked with two of them at lunch and they were really shocked with our food. They were taking photos of it and they were, they were just very shocked that we had so many different options and the type of food we had, it was, it was cool to see their perspective because this is what, like, I experience every day, it just.
So did they say what they normally eat for lunch then?
No, I didn't ask. I should have. I'll ask tomorrow.
They, they asked, probably interested, they typically, uh, for lunch, eat lunch in like a homeroom like Compass and they have students who go to the cafeteria and get the lunch. Everybody gets the same lunch, right? And then they have cleaning period. And I don't know if Yamate has cleaning period. The cleaning period, I've never seen anything like it in my life, where after lunch, everyone cleans. Uh, you get a card, it tells you where you're gonna go clean and you clean it. You know, literally desks, washrooms, the whole school is cleaning.
And then I also met two, I also met two in my band rehearsal. So it was really cool to hear them like fascinated by like how we play and the, um, student, Lockport student introduced the two to everybody in the band and our directors, which I thought was just really nice and we got to know them.
Nice. Good experience for them and for you guys too.
What's the size of their school?
Similar? I think they're about, if, and I'm going from memory, Lance, I think about eighteen hundred at the senior high school. And they're a typical, you know, usually K, K twelve is, you know, usually what you see. So then, that's just from memory. But the mission of the school, all students are required to do, uh, two-week exchanges like this. So a little history of the school, brother, sister, had some wealth post-World War II, saw the devastating effects of that war, created their school with international travel at the heart of it, you know, as their motto said, to to promote, you know, understanding, you know, through peace.
I understand you're doing something tomorrow, right?
Right, they're tomorrow and I believe the time on that, uh, they're doing a little, um, presentation for anybody who would like to go in the East Campus Cafeteria and I must say, it's at five-thirty, I don't have it in front of me. But they're doing sort of a demonstration of kendo. Kendo is a Japanese martial arts. Uh, I believe they're doing kendo, I hope I'm not wrong, uh, and then doing some cultural, some song. And then on the twenty-third, you're all invited, there's a potluck, um, in East Campus Cafeteria as well.
How many students are in class?
Thirty-one students.
And it was, it was amazing when they came, they came off the coach bus and they are all in their school uniforms. I mean, they were like pristine, I mean, after traveling, what, sixteen hours?
It's a long damn draft.
I know, but they were like, they were not even tired in their, in all their school uniforms, so it's very.
Are they still wearing their school uniforms or are they?
No.
All right.
But they, they would typically, if they're gonna, if they're gonna travel and represent their school, they would, they would.
That's what I would, that's what I assumed, like, huh, are they like wearing their uniform or are they just blending in with us, so?
Thank you.
Thank you. And good luck, you guys got this.
And have fun in prom. Have fun in prom, all right?
And Lola Rodriguez, how are you doing that day?
I'm defeated.
If I'm not, you know, we support you. We support you.
All right, Ms. Kishline. T report.
Just a quick report tonight, um, as you can see, there's a lot of exciting things going on here at the end of the year, but just a shout-out, with tomorrow being SAT, to Doris Fleckenstein, who's prepared our staff and done all the behind-the-scenes work, uh, to get us to that point. Along with that, all the teachers who are preparing our students to take these AP exams, um, it's a lot of extra time. And with prom and with all the students that were honored tonight, um, you know, obviously, as I always say, it wouldn't happen without a sponsor or a teacher, so, um, we thank all of them for, for everything they do. But I want to challenge the students, if anyone hears this or sees it, to nominate that teacher who's led you, who's inspired you for the Mildred Jackson Award, um, because this is the time of the year to do that, um, you know, for the, the teachers that have gotten you to that point. So if you could share that, um, with your classmates, um, it's, it's a great honor, so, um, and that's it.
And you can just, if you mind, Mrs. Kishline, I owe you a people, I think one of the important things just for the public to understand, and Mrs. Kishline is underscoring. You know, tomorrow, there'll be hundreds of test rooms and, you know, so many students, almost two thousand students taking state accountability tests. But it is, our, our, our staff members proctor those rooms, you know. Oftentimes, teachers in rooms with, with students they haven't had a chance to meet, they have to follow all sorts of guidelines for test security. It's a big lift. And they also have to have the interruption to their teaching on Tuesday and on Wednesday to, to carry off all this state testing. So, you know, those lesson plans and adjusting, you know, that, um, you know, that has to be taken to, you know, to, to account, uh, too. So just making sure that our public understands that, you know, the staff is fully engaged in that testing tomorrow. We, we couldn't do it without them, without them proctoring and, and giving tests, there would be no way we could, we could do this thing. Oh yeah, Ms. Johnson?
The statement you made about, uh, nominating someone and getting, that's along the line about equal opportunities, like, who, who's the person?
Those are the trusted adults. So the trusted adults are out of equal opportunity schools. And the Mildred Jackson Award is out of the foundation.
But I'm saying to name someone who had encouraged you, supported you.
Yeah. Along the same lines, yeah.
Yeah, it's very, yeah, you got it, Ms. Johnson, very, very similar.
Right.
I did forget to mention, uh, the tech interns tomorrow will be the most important people in the building, so. So I hope they all set their alarms tonight and show up, so, yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kishline. All right, the IASB report, Luanne Johnson?
Well, I don't have anything, but I noticed we had some material in a folder. Every year, uh, when we go to Triple I and I ask you guys to tell me what you think of the resolutions, this is the resolution process. And here are some of the resolutions. So if there, if you got an idea of something that perhaps needs to be changed or looked into, that's when you tap the resolution. And then we can support it.
And as a board, uh, I copied you on a letter that I sent to the state superintendent. Tony Sanderson followed it up with a conversation with Dr. Sanders. And I know his plate is full, uh, down in Springfield, but one thing that I'm working with Taft on, uh, Taft Elementary School is the school construction grant. And I don't, I've, I've never seen a resolution, an IASB resolution related to school construction. And if there are some board members that are interested in, in doing a resolution as a district to endorse, you know, the idea of the school construction grant is to give tax relief to, to local, um, school districts, property tax owners, in that the state helps with school construction. Right now in the state of Illinois, fifty-nine percent, it's really grown since the end of the school construction grant program in two thousand and three. Fifty-nine percent of school buildings in Illinois need some kind of major renovation or remodeling. Some kind of serious problem in that building that needs to be addressed and currently state law, for the most part, asks local property tax owners, homeowners to pay for that. So if the board, I'll talk offline, you can see the timeline, but it might be interesting for Lockport to, to do a resolution.
I think that's a great idea.
And they're, they're non-binding, right? If, if your colleague, school boards across the state, you know, um, agree, all it means is that becomes an official position of the Illinois Association of School Boards.
What is the definition of a major remodeling, reconstruction?
Uh, life safety.
Does it pass a certain dollar amount?
Uh, not necessarily, but, but any kind of life safety improvement, but it's mainly that area, heating, cooling, masonry, electric, Americans with disability access, uh, all of that is really.
With security.
Security, safety and security, water and sewage. Great question.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. All right, foundation report, Miss Ada.
Good evening. Just a couple of things. I just wanted to note that we are, of course, extremely proud that even more students this year compared to last year have applied for scholarships. So we feel like we are making large strides, um, in the availability and the, um, kind of maybe just the information out there that scholarships are available to all students, not just a select few. So, um, the, and every year we seem to add a few more, so every time we're doing this, there's just more opportunity for kids, so, very proud of that. Along those lines, we can't do this without great community partners. And I wanted to highlight, uh, specific donations this evening, just because one came across my desk. Recently, we received a thousand-dollar donation from Dr. McBride, he didn't know I was gonna say this. So Dr. McBride, um, went ahead and did that and it made me sit and think about, um, everyone that's sitting across from, uh, from you guys back there, they also donate to the, um, foundation out of every one of their paychecks, um, to the tune of over sixteen thousand dollars from the staff of Lockport Township High School. I just feel like that's worthy of note to really say who our community is and what the people who work here, what this means to them and the community they work in, live in. Um, I think it speaks volumes about who we actually are as a staff and as a community. So it's just, I'm profoundly proud when I think about, um, those types of things. Very few people give money back to the place they work. It's not a normal thing to do, so this is, uh, I, I, you know, it's just worthy of highlighting and, and sharing with you all. So I'm, I'm very proud of that and, um, you know, it, it, we often talk about how to make sure the foundation continues. And in our last board meeting, I actually said, I feel like the staff does that on a regular with, without ever even being asked. It's like an unsung hero for the foundation, so, wanted to make sure we highlighted that. The foundation is currently working on, uh, mission and goals in trying to understand what is kind of along the horizon for what we're going to be doing. Uh, one of the things we kept talking about is being, you know, I think the foundation doesn't recognize their leadership in our community and how they can positively impact not just our school, but our community at large. So we'll be working on that, uh, for the next few months. And lastly, at your seats, you have a beautiful invitation to the twenty-fifth annual Lockport Township High School golf outing. You know, just, eh, anything that you can do to share that it's happening. It's a, it's a nine-hole scramble, it's easy. We often invite students to come and help, so that, you guys are welcome to come golf if you would like, or come and, uh, enjoy dinner, but, um. So then, and then, um, we, uh, at the last board meeting, we actually suspended, uh, our rules of only having a fifteen-person board as they're seeking to make it a sixteen-person board in the very near future.
Until one of them leaves. Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Anthony.
Legislative report.
Uh, lots going on in Springfield and, um, just, just a whole slew of bills that we are, we are watching, you know, this is the time when everything is in committee, moving out of committee. And, um, you know, fast-moving news, uh, sometimes makes your report irrelevant. Uh, what I wanted to highlight is I wanted to highlight House Bill thirty-nine, zero-seven. And we learned today that, that that bill is not gonna make it out of committee. It had tremendous opposition in, in the state. And, and one reason why I, I wanted to highlight it is because I did file, uh, an opposition witness slip. I asked administrators to do that as well. And, and the reason why is because of the detrimental effect. We, we support teacher, uh, preparation time, we just think that's, that's essential, has to happen. Teachers of all sorts, K through twelve should have, um, preparation time. But what this bill was doing was it didn't allow any room for any kind of exception that might come up. We have an emergency absence, we have to ask, uh, someone to take over someone's class on their, their, um, planning time. Wouldn't allow for that. We have a, a meeting in Dr. Huntington's department, uh, for a student with an IEP, we're required by law to have a teacher present. We ask a teacher and, and we do compensatory things in our, um, in our collective bargaining agreement in those cases when we interrupt, uh, uh, planning time. And so it would have left no wiggle room at all. And really, I think the message for, uh, from a lot of educators is, hey, can we go back to the drawing board and, and, and find something that's closer to the original intent? In many ways, most high schools have, I'm sure Mrs. Kishline is familiar with this, most high schools have memorialized in, in their collective bargaining agreement, preparation time. Not, not all elementary schools do. Um, and I think this is really angled to ensure that our elementary colleagues have, have sufficient planned time. Uh, there is another bill that we're watching, uh, very closely, which is related to dual credit, which we do want to see pass. And what it in essence does, um, is it makes it, uh, each community college that serves its attendance area has to do a more robust job coming into agreement with the, the high schools that it serves. What we're really looking for, many superintendents, we're, we're looking to balance the relationship, to have an equal agreement, in our case with Joliet Junior College, you know, uh, all the way down to things like, like data, we have no control over any of our students leaving, and going into Joliet Junior College, being placed in remedial classes. And yet on our school report card, although we don't make that decision, Joliet Junior College makes that decision. Our students, we, that, that's a metric on our, our school report card, reflects on us. We'd like to have a conversation about that, we'd like to have a conversation about dual credit and some of the expectations on our teachers and qualifications. And just want to deepen, uh, the relationship, you know, with local partners. So we're watching that very, very carefully. That is the legislative report.
This is the public comment follow-up from the March eighteen, twenty-twenty board, board meeting.
You bet, and, um, you know, this is the first time that we've met since, uh, the March nineteenth referendum vote. And you might recall, we were on the eve of that, the election took, took place the very next day. That evening on March eighteen, we had three individuals who spoke in support of the. That evening on March eighteen, we had three individuals who spoke in support of the referendum. We had one individual who spoke against. And you, you heard many of the, the perspectives that you hear in an election, right? That are really important perspectives to hear. Those who spoke in support of it, historic nature of the building, need to have proper, proper facility for students, need to in the future, avoid what we're dealing with this year, which is becoming really, towards the end of the year, very tiresome on everyone involved. You're really feeling that. And, you know, kind of the pride that, that is imputed in the history of that. Then, you know, we heard one person who was not for it, felt the price point of a full renovation, eighty-five million dollars, too costly, questioned investing in a building that in its oldest component has a hundred and fourteen years in it, wanted the board to consider other options other than renovation. You know, I think we listened to that, and then, then ultimately, all those views got put into action the next day with, you know, your strategy was, rather than making decisions for the voters, it's best to step forward with the, with the, the full option of a full renovation of a building. I think you did that because in the past, one of the things that you saw from two thousand and six to two thousand and eleven is that deferred cost is more costly later, it has real cost, and you wanted to avoid that. But you also wanted to give the, you know, taxpayers, in, in that case, twelve thousand five hundred people, they choose first. And then you would pivot from that. That's one of the best surveys you can do on what people are thinking. And that referendum did, did not pass. So one of the things that I, you know, I would say is, there's still a proclivity to divide people into yes voters and no voters. I would say the election's over, you know, to all four of the people. I've talked to as many people who are down about the referendum, it didn't go the way they voted, as I've talked to people who feel it's a good thing that that tax burden is not on the community. And, you know, one of the things I've said to the board the whole time is, on March twentieth, there will still be work to be done, no matter what. You know, that's really the message. Whether you voted yes or you voted no, there's still work to do. Facilities always need work in schools. One of my Rotary colleagues, Mr. Hernandez, he is in that business, he knows there's, there's always work to do. Thanks for joining us tonight. And I know you're in that process right now of exploring what is the work to do and how can you avoid what we're experiencing right now? I think the message you're taking is the voters said, hey, that full renovation, you know, we, we can't do a full renovation. And I know you're exploring what, what can, bless you.
Thank you.
So I'd say to the yes and no voters, it's time to be porters, and it's time to roll up our sleeves and, and do the work. You know, that's just, that's the way it is.
All right. Moving on to public comments. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comment section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy two colon two three oh and Policy eight colon three oh available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response at the time of comment does not imply a lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. There's none. All right, communications, Ms. Johnson? There's none. There's none. Okay. You see there the freedom of information request, you only had one. Moving on to our approval items. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the March eighteen, twenty-twenty four board meeting?
Some of.
Sure.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Thies. Are there any questions? I'm hearing none. Brokaw.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
I believe I will call.
You are?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Lopez Cunego?
Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes from the March eighteen, twenty-twenty four board meeting?
Some of.
I can second that. It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Ms. Lopez Cunego. Are there any questions? I'm hearing none. Brokaw.
Thies?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Cunego?
Yes. Let's see. Do I have a motion to approve the April twenty-twenty twenty-four board expense?
Some of.
Sorry.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions? All right, hearing none. Brokaw.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Thies?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Cunego?
Yes.
All right. So I'll have this second. A little, what else? I sit to the sides and I look, so I can see. Good evening. Are we all ready? So treasures report this month. The primary things I want to point out this month, Dr. McBride, who's driving? You're driving? Okay. I can see you have a heater there.
I, I, yeah, do you need me to go back down?
Could you go to the financial reports for me, please?
Just, oh, you saw.
Yeah, just, just look at the financial reports really quickly before we switch to the next thing, okay? So one of the things I'd like to point out in the treasures report this month, if you would go to the revenue and/or expenditures, either one. So one of the things on the agenda to, later, to, later this evening is the approval of the tentative amended budget for this year. And we'll move to some more information about that in a minute. But I just wanted to point out that in the treasures report this month, we did update the budget figures in here. So it looks a little more accurate now than it has in previous months. So in previous months, you may have noticed especially, more so on the expenditure side of things than the revenue, but on the expenditure side of things, there were some line items that were significantly over budget because of things like the rent to Lincoln Way and some of the capital projects that we've started with the ceiling demolition. And now those should be a little bit more aligned now that the amended, proposed tentative amended budget numbers are in these reports. So that's probably one of the biggest pieces. The other thing is, if you, if you remember last month, we had to reclassify ownership of investments. And by ownership, I mean which funds own those investments. Because of some of that spending where we've spent more in the operations and maintenance fund, we didn't have to do that this month because we reclassified the revenue pieces per the amended suggestions, right? So one of the things that I, you know, one of the piece, some of the pieces of revenue, we can reclassify from fund to fund, and we were able to do that. So my main point is that this is updated for your amended budget numbers. And, you know, it should look a lot more aligned now. All right. Were there any questions specifically on the treasures report itself? Otherwise, we're going to move to some more information on the amended budget that you'll see in the future.
Dr. McBride?
Yeah.
You said in your note to us that there were some suggestions to do something with the treasure report. Can you point out what the changes are?
We have not added too much to it yet. We will start with future pieces. Part of it is looking at these budget graphs and, that we're going to bring up next.
Right, like our cash flow graph, you know, what we include in our fund balance, for example, is our investments. Investments are already restricted, so to give a clearer picture, that bar graph, for example, looking at that bar graph and showing a clearer picture of what is, what is actually the unrestricted working cash that is on hand to, to pay our bills versus restricted investments, you know, that you'd see in the investments report.
Here.
That, that, that is all, those are all investments that will eventually mature monthly to pay bills down the line. So the difference between those two, for example, but you'll see kind of some visual work in the presentation, a number of the audience members and the finance and facilities committee will see the amended budget report in a few minutes. And just some, some visuals to help to understand how funds grow or how funds are dispersed. So you'll see those in, in a presentation in just a second. But in the, in the financial report, we're not kind of all the way there yet.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't added significantly to the treasures report itself yet. And, and the intent will be to add some more graphs as opposed to just the spreadsheet data, right?
Because I was looking to try to figure out what was.
Yeah, nothing's different in here yet. It's more of in the budget presentation. We started with that, right? So were there any other questions on the treasures report pieces itself? Okay. Dr. McBride, if you would please go to the slide presentation. The last item.
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay. Okay. So this is a presentation about the tentative amended budget, which you'll see in, for approval in the future here. The few members that were at the finance and facilities committee meeting will have, will recognize this. It's, it's the same presentation that they have seen.
And Mrs. Kreuzer, permission? Do you want me to hand out this companion?
Sure.
This is, just for board members, what this is, is this is the line item budget, but what's highlighted is what is being amended and, and why is it being amended? So just, you know, Mrs. Kreuzen can go over every single line item in that, you know, pretty thick line item budget, but it gives you an idea of, of what changes will be made. Sorry, Deborah.
Yeah, that's okay. Yeah, as, as Dr. McBride opened this, on the, on the agenda item for the tentative amended budget, there were a number of things there. This presentation is just one of those things. This detail line item is also part of it. There's also a summary that looks something like this, that's just the, the typical one-page summary similar to a statement of position that, there, those are all various items for the board to see the different, different ways to look at the amended, tentative amended budget, okay? So first, why amend this budget? Why did we have to do this, right? This district does not typically, some school districts will automatically amend their budget every single year to line everything up by the end of the year. This district has not historically done that. We've only done it in the time that the law says we have to, right? And when is that? That is when something happens that causes our expenditures to exceed a ten percent limit within a fund, okay? One of the main things, obviously, November, we had a ceiling collapse in a classroom, right? That has caused a lot of additional expenditures. Those are all much more significant than what the law allows us to transfer between budget line items. So this is one of the reasons. The second reason, Dr. McBride, will you go to the next slide, please? Is back in December, when the board approved the twenty-twenty-three operating budget, the board also approved two resolutions to abate the debt service levy for the two bond issues that we currently have, the district currently has outstanding. So what that means is the board decided not to levy that portion of the tax levy, effectively reducing the tax burden for the taxpayers this year by saying, we're not going to ask you, taxpayer, for the money that we said we were going to ask you for to pay for these bonds. Instead, we're transferring the money from operating funds of the education fund. So that being, that is another piece because now the revenue for the debt service fund, which is where we pay the bonds from, is basically cut in half. We won't be collecting property taxes in the spring in that fund. So we still have to pay the full, full payment, so we have to transfer money into that. So there are a number of, a couple of line items, property tax revenue and interfund transfers from the upper, from the education fund are both affected, and it's definitely more than, it's fifty percent of the revenue, so it's definitely more than ten percent. What I'd like to point out here on the visual is what you're seeing there is a snapshot from our proof from the county of our property tax levy and extension, right? So what this is showing is it's showing the levy and it's showing the bond and interest levy at zero. Okay? The other thing that I'd like to point out about this is, you know, these are the only two bonds series that we have outstanding. The last big chunk of debt that the district had was from, it was a larger bond issue back from when the biggest addition on East Campus was done, which was ninety-five, ninety-six. Those bonds were paid off just before COVID, I believe. And so there was a period of a few years there through COVID where the debt service levy and rate, that portion of the tax bill on people, on taxpayers', tax bills, where it dropped off because instead of issuing additional debt, the district decided not to do that, right? We decided not to issue more bonds and, and keep the debt service levy kind of stable or the same. Instead, they let it drop off and let the taxpayers feel that reduction in that during that timeframe. Do you have anything else to add on the tax rate?
Just something I think is important to point out to the board, the audience, anybody who's listening to this meeting is, you know, one, your strategy of abatement, you made, you were looking, you know, ahead, you were looking at what happened at Central. You suspected at some level you were going to sell municipal bonds or life safety bonds. You knew that that debt service was going to increase. So what you did is you did this abatement to discount the levy on the, the operating side, knowing that that was coming to give some relief. The other thing I would always notice is right up there at the top of that proof is the limiting rate. And our, our tax rate continues to decline. I will guess, we haven't done this, but, but for the past few years, we've been the lowest limiting rate out of seventeen high school districts in the area. And the reason why I bring that up is, you know, I've, I've seen, I've heard from folks who have, have told me, I, I don't know, that, that even though it's not May, you can electronically access your property tax bill, and people notice that their property tax is going up. So how is it possible that we abated taxes, we have a declining tax rate? That, that's work that you do as a board. The, the driver is the value of your home, what your home is assessed at. If your home value goes up, your taxes will go up. And I think it's important, just in understanding taxes, that we don't assess the value of homes. That's outside of our purview. That's not a part of what we do as a school district. We try to do our part to give some property tax relief, as Mr. Navarro said in the fall. Can we do just, just something? And we work hard within all of our budgeting and all of our expenditures to keep our tax rate declining. Those are the contributions that we can make to dampen and try to give some relief. So just stopping on that just for a moment.
Any questions on why we need to amend? Okay. Dr. McBride? So then the next question is, how do we do it, right? So the process by, as, the reasons that we have to, the reasons why we have to amend the budget, as well as the process, are in school code. So the process is exactly the same as for when we do the, when we have to approve the original budget, right? So which is why we're doing the tentative amended budget now. There, the board has to approve the tentative, the tentative budget, tentative amended budget, either way, thirty, thirty, at least thirty days prior to approving the final. Our May and June board meetings would not leave enough time. Even if they did, this district, we've traditionally done it two months ahead of time. It gives plenty of time. It doesn't make us have to have any special board meetings, and it leaves plenty of time for the posting on our website and availability to the public. So what will happen is we'll put the required notice in the paper, and the board will approve the amended budget in June. What line items need amending? So this list should not be unfamiliar because over the last several months, I've been kind of telling the board in the, as part of the, the treasures report, what types of things that we would have to amend. It hasn't changed. It's pretty much been the same. Probably the only addition is since the original budget between then and now, we've amended a number of our federal grants because we had rollover funds come in or additional funds. So while we were amending it, we cleaned those things up so that the, oftentimes what happens is we amend a grant budget with the Illinois State Board of Education, but we don't do the ten, the amended budget in our system because that's tied to the legal budget that the board approves, and then they don't match. Now we're aligning them, right? So what happened is all those expenditures, salaries, the travel stipends for traveling teachers, rent, tolls, purchase services for things like referendum preparation materials by the architect, also purchase services for some of the structural analysis work that we had done, the capital projects, the demolition, the start of the remodeling of the ceilings, interfund transfers related to debt service, the debt service abatement, and then the grant expenditures. Those are all things either related to the central ceiling collapse and demolition and rebuild, at relocation to Lincoln Way North, et cetera. And then revenue side, the property taxes related to the debt service, corporate property, property rep, corporate personal property replacement tax. That is um, replacement taxes that the district receives in lieu of property taxes from certain entities. There, we are not restricted on which fund that goes into. Typically, we've put that in the Education Fund because it's a, that that's where most of our expenditures go, so that's where we put most of the revenue. In this case, this is a, this year, the operations and maintenance fund is in greater need. So it makes sense to rebudget that to the operations and maintenance fund. That's why that's affected interest income. The rates have stayed higher than expected, so we were able to increase that budget line item to match what we've received, which offsets a little bit of the expenditure, but not all of them, as you will see. Any other, there's, yeah, a few other little ones in there. So this is the summary that I've typically presented in, um, with but revenues at the top, expenditures, and then the change in fund balance in between. So now you'll see in the original budget, this this line item here is basically the net overage or under, right? So typically, it's a balanced budget. That's the goal. The board wants to approve a balanced budget. In this case, we are not going to be balanced. It's not in total, right? It's a balanced budget from the operating standpoint, but not because of these capital expenditures. So as far as the state board is concerned, it's still allowable to be passed this way because it's the capital expenditures that are pushing us over. As you can see, it's a $2 million reduction. We did talk about how much that overall fund balance may be impacted. It's not quite the 4 million that we're estimating, the whole relocation, demolition, rebuild will end up being. But that's because it's gonna, it's gonna split over a couple of different um, fiscal years, right? We're gonna start the rebuild process. We won't pay all those expenses and some of them until the, into the next fiscal year. Um, so.
It's not balanced because we have unforeseen expenses?
Capital, the capital expenses that are unforeseen, yeah.
That's where cash reserves come into cover.
Yep, that's where fund balances will be reduced because we're going to be using some of that to pay for this. The next slide is a comparison from that, what was just seen, what you just saw, which is the amended summary. This is a comparison to what the original summary was from when the budget approved in September. So this shows the differences in all the different areas. If there's a little dash, that means there was no difference in that particular area, right? And you can see most of the things are affecting the Education Fund and the Operations and Maintenance Fund and then debt service capital projects. There's obviously some in transportation as well. We've got additional bus driver salaries for more time that they're traveling, tolls. That was something I hadn't thought of until I got the next toll bill. So a- any questions on those summary pieces?
This is very minute, but if we were to not drive through tolls, how much would some of these like things add up? Because sometimes tolls only add like, uh, only save like two or three minutes depending on the routing.
Yeah, I I don't know. The time saving would have been, it's worth it for the tolls.
All right.
Yeah, it was definitely worth it and more so from um, time of bus drivers on bus, you know, the bus driver on the bus. So, yeah, the tolls, it it has worked out. Um, our transportation department is actually very good at rerouting when necessary and taking the least amount of time. And um, they were, so they were ten, they were worried about I-80, but it has worked out really well. It's been worth it going on through.
Is there a lot of variance because of the traffic, like early morning traffic?
I'd have to ask the transportation people, yeah. I just know they adjust when they need to.
All right.
I think what she's saying is the cost of the additional.
Time for the bus driver, the tolls outweigh, utilizing tolls outweighs paying the bus driver more than.
That's true.
Not only that, but it's the students, getting there, the students, I'm fine. You know, say those bus drivers don't have to come back. Yeah, so it's, yeah. So the next couple of slides are a comparison from original to budget. So this might be a little difficult to see because of the color scheme, but um, what you're seeing on the top is this is the expenditures. We're starting with the expenditures. So the expenditures, this is basically saying all of the different segments of expenditures. So types of expenditures, supplies, employee benefits, uh, purchase services, uh, salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, capital outlay, which is uh, equipment and construction-related things, and tuition, debt payments, and other. There's this tiny little sliver here that's termination benefits too. And that's what that is, is when um, someone leaves, it's a payout, it's like their vacation accumulated, that kind of thing. So that's the, from the original budget. This is the breakdown from the amended budget. So what the intent is to show you how things have changed, right? So the um, percentage changed because this segment got bigger, um, this segment got bigger. This is purchase services, this is where rent is. This is capital projects, so that got bigger. Well, that means that this section looks like it's smaller percentage-wise. Does that make sense? It's intended to kind of show you like the breakdown of the pieces. And then we have a similar one for revenue. All the different types of revenue sources, um, kind of showing the difference between, um, in the original budget, I actually expected to get more corporate personal property replacement taxes than we are getting, so that has shrunk a little. And in in contrast, this green one is interest income. We've gotten a lot more interest income than um, I originally expected because I didn't expect the high rates to last as long, right? So that's kind of a breakdown of the different um, revenue pieces. And then property taxes, of course, has reduced because we're not going to be getting about 670, 670,000 dollars of debt service this year, that would be property taxes. Any questions on that breakdown? So then the other pieces, I just figured this might be easier to stand and show these pieces. Hopefully that's okay. These other slides are intended to show the breakdown of all the various things that we um, revenue-wise collect and expenditure-wise, the breakdown of the pieces. This is a really good illustration. Um, Dr. McBride and I have told you before that the state, state of Illinois funds public schools by property taxes. That's, that's how it's set up. That's why 76% of our revenue comes from property taxes. And then another 3% comes from another tax that's in lieu of property taxes, right? So that's 79% is property tax revenue. We do get these other revenue sources and in in normal years, interest income would only be 1 or 2%. But this has been a higher, and then we have all these other pieces, right? So evidence-based funding, that's the state's general funding for school districts. We only get 5% of our revenue from that. So that that just shows the state has chosen property taxes as the funding source, not other state, you know, revenue. And then we have other, various other grants as well. The the biggest of our grants are the Special Education Department grants. And even though those are the biggest grants we receive, um, you know, as far as state and federal money, they still don't cover the costs of the program. Not even close, right? So that's our, that's our revenue breakdown. And then expenditures, there's a slide for each piece of the expenditures, meaning salaries, benefits, um, purchase services, supplies, et cetera. So they're intended to show you um, what, this one is showing all of those pieces and then there's, okay, what makes up each of those. So the vast majority of our expenses are salary and benefits because we are a, we're in a service industry, right? And then purchase services and capital outlay are also, like, they're directly related to, the increases in them are directly related to this change. Dr. McBride, will you slide to the next one, please, unless someone has a question on that breakdown of our expenditures? So this is just the salary breakdown, just to ident, just so that the the board can see what the largest expenses is, of course, our licensed staff that um, Mrs. Kishline talks about every, every month. That they are the bulk of our um, expenditures because they're the, they're the ones teaching our students, right? So between that and other um, educational support, there's one of these sections is also educational support. Oh, the paraprofessionals are the 3%, um, and then technology staff, um, transportation staff, custodial maintenance and ground staff. It, this is intended to show all of the pieces of the pie and that the vast majority of it are directly related to education, educating our students and then maintaining the facilities that those students are in. Employee benefits, also directly related, health insurance is the largest cost, as well as pension, required pension contributions like Illinois Municipal Retirement Fund, Teachers Retirement System, FICA and Medicare, of course, that everyone pays into. Um, those are all required. We don't have a choice of what to pay, whether we're paying those or not, but they're directly related to our salaries. Purchase services. So the breakdown of this has changed a little bit. This rental section would not normally be this large, right? It's because of the little over $1 million that we will be paying over the course of the um, seven months that we're, or so that we're occupying Lincoln Way North. That's what that's all about. Transportation services is one of our other big chunks and that is primarily our outplaced, um, yes, primarily our outplaced students. It's the um, special education transportation for those students, right? So it's um, for student, um, that, that's that transportation service piece. And web-based software is another piece of, um, the the board will be presented, uh, I don't know if it's today, is it today's or is it next month? Okay, can't, couldn't remember. For those of the, I I believe Anne might have been on the board then and Mrs. Johnson might have been on the board as well, back when there were textbook adoptions, right? Or those of you that were teachers back then, we don't have textbook adoptions anymore. Instead, we have electronic resources. Web-based software is where that cost is. Supplies, this is intended to show just the educational supplies makes up the vast majority of our expenditures. And then um, running our buildings, supplies related to running our buildings and the utilities is the other pieces of that. And then the capital projects piece shows our current projects and other equipment, right? So the two, the projects, of course, are the biggest piece, the east roofing project that finished this year at the beginning of the year. Then the central ceiling repairs in the budget. Um, and then there's transportation equipment. We buy buses every year. We replace buses. And then other educational equipment is another big chunk of that. And then finally, the other expenditures is made up of things like tuition to other educational facilities. When a student, um, when our district, for some reason, can't meet the educational needs of a student with an individual educa, individual education program, um, we find a proper placement for them, right? And that's, that big chunk of this type of expense is um, for that. The other piece that's in here is for, is tuition to facilities like Wilco, where our nursing students go and some of our other um, what are they, like CTE-type programs, right? Career programs. So that, those are the types of tuition we pay. Then there's our bond payments. Anne, sorry, I'm probably hitting this, aren't I? Student activity account expenditures, bond pa, and bond payments. Those are the other pieces of that. And I think that's all I have. Did those graphs help illustrate like what the makeup of the budget is as opposed to going through that line item piece?
Yes.
Yeah, because that was the whole, right? Yeah.
Yes, it's so sick.
So are we amended versus like the original plan? When we're talking about the salaries, I know we talked about how like there's some staff leaving. Is that decrease due to like certain staff leaving or did we increase other budgets through the decrease of the salaries?
So in total, salaries actually went, went up a little bit with, in here, which that's a, I guess that's a little deceiving when you look at the percentage piece, right? So the percentage graph made it look like salaries in total went down, but the percentage of the salaries is what went down, so of total, right? So other parts went up, so this went down. Um, we actually had salaries have to go up a little bit, about $100,000 because of the extra day we had to pay teachers. With the move, we used up all those emergency days, so um, we didn't, it didn't act, they actually ended up going up. So that was a little confusing. Sorry about that. Questions? Yeah, any other questions about the budget, amended budget? So my expectation is there'll be very little change between now and June. It would be minor if there's anything else that comes up, so. Because for example, I spoke to um, my counterpart at Lincoln Way, um, Mr. Duback, um, reconciling the rent. It looks like we are, we were right on our projection, so I expect that to be fine. I don't expect to have to adjust that again. Actually, forgot to tell you that.
Well, thank you.
Telling us now. Take it.
So, yeah, I don't expect um, significant changes in that between now and then. If there is anything, I'll update the board again in May if anything new comes up. And then in June, the board will be asked to approve the final amended. Well, thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the March 2024 treasures report?
So moved.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis Roehl.
Shaw?
Yes.
Teas?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
No questions coming in?
Yes.
Superintendent Report.
All right, I'm I'm gearing up something for part of my um, superintendent report. I really want to make, uh, I think it would be Dr. Reenan and Mr. Dwyer and and Dr. Green, if you'd like to join uh, as well, kind of start of the show, but just a few things. One, I just think we have to acknowledge there's so many student achievements I can't keep up. 118 Illinois State Scholars, top-ranked in the country, uh, Winter Guard, varsity and JV team. If you've never seen Winter Guard, you don't know what you're missing. It is part Broadway, part dance, part rifles, part sabers, part showmanship. I taught them some things theatrically I've never seen in high school theatrics. Amazing. And then they qualified for Worlds where they finished uh, second this weekend. In date, and and you're seeing that all around, Skills USA idea. Next month, I hope we get to acknowledge HOSA. I haven't forgotten. Thank you very evil, evil. And we just still have so many things that we have to acknowledge. You know, these are top-notch, um, top in the state or top in the country. Performances and like Mrs. Kishline said, you know, behind them are people doing the coaching, the mentoring, the advising. On post-referendum work, uh, ve- very briefly, just a couple of things that are going on in 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 the post-referendum. You know, in addition to looking at the um, uh, uh, you know, the the election results, a couple of things we're we're doing right now. You know, you as a board is taking a look at what options you have as you face um, roof, electrical, uh, heating and cooling, masonry, window, safety, bathroom, Americans with Disability Act. You know, the message from the community is can't do a full school, scale renovation. So what what can you do with your, with your bonding power to head off um, any future uh, failure of that building? So you are in in the middle of that. You're also in the middle of considering, what are some other alternative revenue sources that might fuel? Had a conversation with Mr. Teas about uh, development in Lockport, for example, and that generates all sorts of school revenue. Solar um, investments can generate revenue as well and generate um, the opportunity for something called alternative revenue bonds that uh, aren't passed on to the taxpayers, in essence. So do you do a mix of of things to try to improve uh, facilities? Just was working with um, a company we're using for surveying, getting close to doing a survey that'll just go out to as many community members in the post-referendum era. We have a central campus advisory council. They're gonna meet again on Wednesday morning. Mr. Hill and Mrs. Garrettson, who are here, are members of that council. We had a nice tour, about half of us in the council toured Central, Central's in between, and any board member who would like to walk through. It, it's in a unique space right now where uh, the demolition is done, some general carpentry and masonry being done before the ceilings are are restored. So all of that work is going on. I'm on a spotlight, May 13th, we're planning a special board meeting that's only finances and facilities. And we're planning on spending about an hour, like we did today in East Campus, about 6:00 PM, giving any community member who walks in access to you, access to our architects, access to um, PMA Financial, access, I hope, to some uh, council members and and more. Might even have access to uh, folks working on the survey for us. Might even have the survey results as well. But that's May 13th, 6:00 PM before the special board meeting. It's at 7:00 PM.
Will we have the survey results?
I hope, yeah. You know, the goal is to get that survey in the field this week or the beginning of next. We generally put things out on Friday, uh, as Mrs. Wheeler knows. Camp, a central campus update, um, and Mr. Dwyer, why don't you come on down and Dr. Green, if you're gonna. Camp, Central Campus Update, and Mr. Dwyer, why don't you come on down and Dr. Green, if you're going to help out? We are done with the demolition. Well done with that. The building is cleaned up and, you know, but it, but it's an eerie feeling when you go and you see those twenty-three classrooms that have their ceilings removed, those three hallways. It, it is eerie. You're staring into these spaces. We had our structural engineers come through to take a look, as I've shared with the board. Good news. They found really just general carpentry, general masonry that needs to be fixed before we rebuild ceilings. And we should be online to, I hope, bring to you by May thirteenth, latest May twentieth. May thirteenth is the target date for bids to start reconstructing those ceilings so that we can open in August. That's right online. I want to turn, turn over to my colleagues, Dr. Green and Mr. Dwyer from Athletics, because as much as we focused on Central, we have all sorts of other needs in all sorts of other places. And one spotlight, I always say that the second school begins at 2:45 PM. For example, Mrs. Kishline wears many hats here, but one is ticket manager. Somebody's got to manage all the tickets that, that we sell at, at athletic events. So I'm going to allow Mr. Dwyer with support of Dr. Green to take it away. Just want to walk you through some of the things going on in, in Athletics. And you just tell me when, when to advance, Mr. Dwyer.
Sounds great. Thank you for this opportunity to present to everyone here tonight. Obviously, thank you for the school board for taking time out to, to hear this report. As Dr. McBride mentioned, you know, the IHSA has continued to expand opportunities for kids and Lockport High School always keeps pace with that expansion. So I'll talk about that. That was kind of the nature of the beginning of this report. We were discussing furthering opportunities for our students and the challenges that that brings along with us. Able to continue to support our community, the demands of our community and, and, you know, most importantly, our kids. Like Dr. McBride said, you know, I always say that as well, you know, my job, I come in at 7:15 and a lot of times I don't go home until around now. Schools, good schools cannot operate from seven to three only. There are a lot of opportunities for our students to be involved, to be connected, to grow, to learn, to mature after the 2:45 bell rings. And that comes in our curricular, co-curricular events, our clubs and our athletics. Obviously, we, you know, we have, we have a mission statement for, for our athletics that we talk about with all of our coaches and our student athletes, our parents. But most importantly, it, it guides us and it helps us form our approaches to provide these opportunities for our students. Obviously, we are driven to enhance the overall student confidence, self-esteem, feeling of contributions in the high school community. Lockport High School, as we all know, is one of the largest high schools in the state of Illinois. But I think through our clubs, our activities, our athletics, it gives us an opportunity to make a very large school feel small. It gives our kids an opportunity to be connected to peers, to role models, mentors, leaders, coaches, and other communities as well. That's a big part of it. Participation is a positive choice for our kids. We want to give our kids opportunities to have choices of things to do after school. It's kids and coaches working together through servant leadership, providing, you know, a variety of experiences. I talk to the parents a lot about experiences and, and kids about, you know, adversity is an important part and an important lesson of athletics. Not everything is always successful. Not everything is always great, although I do want to highlight some of the success that we've had. Lockport High School has a rich tradition in athletics. One state championship in the seventies, one state championship in the eighties, seven state championships in the nineties, eight in the early two thousands. We dipped a little bit in the, in the 2010, 2020 to three. And we've had six so far, including the COVID year, so far. We've had six state championships and thirteen state trophies. Numerous sectionals, numerous all-state, numerous state champions, those kind of things. So by providing our kids these opportunities, we are giving them those experiences. But the thing that I always tell the parents I'm the most proud of is eighty percent of our senior athletes have a 3.2 GPA or higher. So again, the connection to school, the expansion of those opportunities to learn does reflect positively, not only in our successes, but also in the successes in the classroom of our student athletes as well. And like Ms. Kishline has said, our teachers, our coaches and our influencers. Go ahead and. Oh, oh, actually, I'm sorry. I already did that slide. That's how good I was. I'm sorry. Here we go. There we go. So obviously influence and impact on our student athletes also has an influence and impact on our community as well as our facilities and our staff. So I'll just talk a little bit about that. It is important to know, like I said, our kids are involved at Lockport High School. This is one of the most, you know, fantastic things about this community and about this building. We have thirty IHSA opportunities for student athletes, thirteen boys teams, fourteen girls teams, and three co-ed teams. Co-ed, you know, football is considered a co-ed sport, cheerleading and dance. Those are co-ed sports. Obviously, IHSA has, has introduced the idea of girls' flag football. I don't know where we're at yet, but again, that was kind of the purpose of this discussion tonight was to discuss that opportunity. And obviously numerous clubs, Winter Guard, band, you know, lots of other opportunities for our kids. We always talk to our kids, to our parents, to our coaches about high school athletics, the difference between high school athletics and travel, AAU, those kind of things. High school athletics is always first and foremost an educational opportunity. It's an educational athletic premise. And what we mean by this is helping our kids do those things I talked about. Understanding their role on a team, whether you are the starter or you're the thirtieth player on the team. Every kid's role is important. Every kid's experience is important. But again, it doesn't always mean success, playing time, those kind of things. It's the lessons that are embedded in all of that commitment, dedication. And again, making a large school, a large community feel small. So those are all things that are important. We, we talk to our kids about being a part of something that is bigger than themselves. The we over me mentality. So obviously, we've mentioned the growth of the, of IHSA programs, the impression on our community and the impact on Lockport Township. We have very few cut sports here. A lot of there are opportunities for student athletes. You know, there are some sports that have to have cuts simply because of the nature of the sport. But we always have in every season an opportunity for a kid to be on a team they do not have to be cut from. You know, Lockport High School, I'm very, very proud to say, from the support of many of our school board members, our administration, we led the way for athletics out of the pandemic. We were one of the first high schools to start doing events safely and, and successfully. And we were really able to get kids back involved, doing the things that they love. But again, connecting to their school, connecting to their community and connecting with their peers, their teachers and their coaches. Those are the, those are the important aspects. We have over two thousand registered athletes over three seasons. We have over twenty-three hundred summer camp registrations. Not all of our sports offer summer camp registration, so these are first graders, second graders, third graders. A huge connection with our community through our summer programs and again, with our current kids on campus through the programs and athletics that we offer. The impact of that, however, is like I said, thirty programs, seventy-seven levels that we offer. AB, cross off, JV one, JV two, all those kinds of things. We have fifteen practice or competition areas. Of those, only six of them are good enough for a varsity competition to be held. Obviously, Central Gym, not, you know, talking about this season, but normally Central Gym, you know, our volleyball team, our boys volleyball team plays there. Our East Gym is our, is our girls volleyball team, boys and girls basketball, cheer and dance have competitions there and obviously boys and girls wrestling. The pool, swimming, water polo, Porter Stadium is both boys and girls track and field, football, boys and girls lacrosse. And occasionally, and last week included, we, we have to move spring soccer. Because the grass field, it's sometimes it's just not ready. So we play some spring soccer in the, in Porter Stadium as well. Obviously, Flink Field with baseball and softball. And then our soccer complex on the far north, southeast corner of the campus. So the challenges with this, you know, is the facility use. And again, like I said, part of this community is making those connections with our feeder programs as well. Practice and training, as we know, are important aspects of athletic success and allowing kids to feel part of teams. But as our opportunities grow, matching those events for practice space and times conducive to a high school experience, because we said it is educational-based, becomes difficult. We have to have early morning practices, late night practices. You know, obviously weekends, those kind of things. The ability to do speed training, agility training, rehab, weight training is limited here because of our space. But again, we are a large athletic program. Locker rooms are, are spread apart. And then obviously with that comes supervision issues and storage concerns with all of the equipment that we have and that we need for our programs. And obviously, a very important aspect of our success and a very important aspect of our mission, more importantly, is the connection with our feeders. To make them feel welcomed as they become future porters. To make them feel like they have experiences on our campus prior to entering the doors as a freshman or prior to enter the doors, you know, as a sophomore, student, athlete, student. So opportunities for them to connect and grow. Those requests, you know, continue to climb as well. The partnership with the CWC has been really instrumental for us, very important. They've done a fantastic job connecting with our wrestling, junior wrestling, junior football. We have made a concerted effort in the last year to really reach out to our community to grow basketball and those opportunities for our youth in our field house. We've done a really good job of that. Again, that, that's really come a lot of, with a lot of work with the CWC on those kind of things. But getting, growing our relationships with our youth kids, our youth coaches and our youth parents is extremely important as the future of the high school continues to want to succeed. We have united for the last two years, got a united booster club. Again, along the lines of uniting everybody, everybody kind of pulling on the same rope in order to be better. We, we've put our arms around that. We've got that going. There's still a couple, couple of ancillary groups out there. But for the most part, it is a united front and, and we've done a really good job, again, supporting each other in the community. And that was what it was all about, is all programs supporting all programs. So the supervision challenges that come with the expansion that we've had and again, creating opportunities and moments for our kids. Home field, home court, home pool environment is amazing. The feeling for our kids to be able to compete at home and to be able to host IHSA postseason events here is really fantastic. It's been a great part of my career here, the six years I've been here. We have hosted many regionals and sectionals here and our kids have won those. And it's been really great to see and celebrate with our community on our home floor and those kind of things. However, it's a large campus stretch, right? Fans visiting school experience is vital. One of the things, again, I think that is important to, is we do welcome other communities here all the time. Six days a week, we have things going on. Other people from other communities are coming to our building. So it's important to make them feel safe. Make them important, important to feel welcome and important to feel that they're coming to a high-class facility, you know, to watch their sons and daughters participate in play. Again, I talked about the fact that we are one of the largest schools and we also want to strive to provide an atmosphere that shows that we are not only one of the largest, but we are also one of the best. With the increasing events and the increasing dates, obviously in the last ten years, the IHSA has added boys lacrosse, girls lacrosse, competitive dance, competitive cheer, and now girls wrestling and potentially flag football. That growth, you know, we, we just have not matched that with our facilities, with our supervision. You know, we have, like I said before, we have seventy-seven levels for our kids. This year, I counted, we had a hundred and forty-one events that required myself or my assistant to be at. Saturdays, and that's not including the, the away events or the IHSA postseason things that we go to. And then our athletic trainers. I'll, I'll take you on a quick tour of a spring day last year. We would start at Central Campus with the volleyball game. We would work our way over to Flink where we have softball, baseball going. Work our way further over here now to the, to the stadium where maybe there's a track meet going on or a lower level baseball game. Work our way inside the building to the pool. Work our ways inside the building a little bit more to the gym where maybe badminton or again, like I said, volleyball might be going on. And then to the far southeast corner where our soccer fields are. Again, great facilities, great opportunities for our kids, but a very large and expansive area to cover, to supervise and to provide safety and guidance for, for our student athletes at all times. So that part has been complicated. Our team does, however, continue to find ways to support each other and to work together so that we can promote all of our stakeholders and always are looking for ways to improve. We just felt like with the coming of the IHSA opportunities and the increasing opportunities they are offering, that it was important to kind of give the school board an opportunity to understand the size and scope of our athletic programs as well as some of those challenges that we face. We are extremely fortunate here. By no means is this meant to be a, you know, a, a, a poor me type of situation. However, I just want to make sure that Lockport High School is continually held in that high regard and that we provide those opportunities for our kids and for our communities for, for, for years to come. Are there any questions?
If I can just add too, before possibly there's any questions, a big thank you to Mike, first of all, for putting together kind of like a state of the union.
Yeah.
Athletic department.
That's kind of a long one, right?
But I can speak just from a couple of different lenses of experience that I've had here at Lockport. Going back about fourteen years ago, at that particular time, we had an assistant athletic director model that was seasonal. And I was the first person to take part in that in the fall season. So I saw very closely the demands on our facilities at that time. That was, again, that was approximately fourteen years ago before some of the more recent sports, IHSA sports that we have added, as Mike had just indicated, boys and girls lacrosse, competitive dance, girls wrestling and on the horizon, girls flag football. We are so fortunate to have wonderful facilities that I think even, even more important is maintained by the great people that we have who, who work on our facilities. But the demand is real. I, I saw that even closer my two years as assistant principal overseeing facilities, working closely with Mike and still, of course, very closely now in my role here as principal. To see the demands on our facility, I think Mike also pointed out something very important. Our partnership with the Community Wellness Center, Mike and Sue Cloughman do such a great job in coordinating. A lot of the youth programming that Mike had alluded to that has been established, but also is growing in a number of sports, which we love to see. That partnership to our community. Looking back at the most recent renovation or addition that we had on the East Campus about six, seven years ago, you know, some of you might recall that there was also an additional gym in the original plans for that that did had to get cut, of course, because of increasing costs. And we understood why that had to happen. But of course, the demand hasn't gone away. You know, we've added the sports, we've added the feeder programming as well. And this was a good opportunity just to, to listen to, again, the, the demands and the challenges that we, that we have for an athletic department that we want to continue to see thrive.
Dwyer, as, as you mentioned, programs, you know, are growing and stuff. Are you, should we need a support, should we need to hire more assistants for the athletic department?
My wife says yes. That is one of the, the concerns is, is like I said, with a hundred, that's a hundred and forty-one dates. That's not, those aren't a hundred and forty-one events. Those are, those are dates with multiple events going on on those dates. Like I said, I was trying to take the picture of, we can have multiple things going on, Central, Flink, all over the place. So that is a concern is to be able to, to cover those things properly, to be able to greet people, greet. Again, you know, one of the things we talk about in athletics and our challenges is the lack of officials. So an important part of my job, one thing that I really pride myself on is getting out there and greeting those officials right away. Making sure they know, you know, who to come to if there's issues, where to go, with the AED, the athletics training staff, those kinds of things. So it's just difficult sometimes to be able to get to all those areas with the expansive campus that we have and the large number of events.
Yeah. One of the things we've been talking about, you know, Dr. Green had mentioned, is a seasonal, an event supervisor. So each season you have a dedicated event supervisor. Because people like Mrs. Kishline, when she's doing tickets, she's just doing tickets. Our athletic staff is just doing, you know, visiting teams, rules, field preparation. But who is the person who's keeping the eye on parking, visiting fans? Gates are open, all the things that go into an event. You know, possibly bringing to the board. all the things that go into an event, you know, possibly bringing to the board, we're still looking at different models, but a seasonal, fall, winter, spring event supervisor who's overlooking all those, those parts, to make sure that they work together.
Just to catch up, the, by these supervisors, that's also the same thing he means as officials, right?
No, no, just somebody, you know, like, like Mike described in the journey from Central all the way to the soccer field, someone who's just looking at the event, is the event running well? Is it running smoothly?
And that's a supervisor.
Everything from, you know, are the porta potties there to, are the right gates open? If the officials are actually calling the game.
Oh, so what do you, you said that we have a lack of officials?
There is a lack of officials, partly because of sometimes the treatment that they receive at the event, so there are fewer and fewer officials available.
The IHSA is down right now 6,000 officials where it was 10 years ago.
So, so part of that role would also be to help those and support those officials in any instance they, to hopefully help grow that back, to be able to provide these opportunities.
In your Chris Football, is this a facilities discussion or is it a people discussion?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yeah, I, I just think we, we, we do a fantastic job here of that, but I think it's always a concern, you, you're always trying to play catch up, and eventually, you know, you, you run out of real estate, you run out of, you run out of opportunities to provide, and that's, that's the concern. And quality.
Right. You know, sports that have been added, fields have not been added, and those numbers start to go up, and it becomes even more of a challenge, and that's when we had Central Campus to use. You know, so it, Mike and his staff and, and our other administrators have been very, and coaches have been creative with what we can do, and we're getting through this year, but those challenges, challenges existed even when we had Central Campus to use. So I would, I would echo Mike, to answer your question, yes, on both of those. You know, I think it really is time to have the conversation about the facility challenges that we have here at East Campus as well. So is it a, maybe better said, is it a question of we have too much? Personally, I would say no to that, because as a school our size, one of the things that I always talk to when I talk to parents in the community about maybe a little bit of reservation that they have about LTHS is I hear it's just about the number of students from a, from a perspective of, will my child be able to get involved? And I always say, because I truly believe it, we have something to offer for everybody here. Yep, we're large, we're over 3,800 students, but I also love the fact, the, the amount of athletics that we can offer, 50-plus activities, we have a Community Wellness Center program that's continuing to grow as well, so I would definitely say no to that, especially at a school our size. We certainly don't want to cut back, we want, we want to continue to provide. And I think girls' flag football on the horizon, not just that, but that really started the conversation again, and appreciate Dr. McBride, you know, giving us the opportunity to talk about this today.
Yeah, I can appreciate the more opportunities for our students, I like that idea, and there's lots of sports that's going to be evolving as the future goes, and, you know, just hoping we can stay with that.
Continue, right, continue to provide those opportunities. Thank you very much.
And that is my report, so.
Thank you. All right, we end into our information reports, curriculum report.
And by no means an understudy, but Dr. Angela Huntington, Dr. Christopher, a medical emergency, her family. I think everything's okay, but need, need some TLC at home.
Yes, I hope I will do her justice, as you know, that there was lots in her report, so just to review. So this month, she is sharing with you some additional instructional resources that she would like the board to review. She's anticipating putting those instructional resources on next board meeting for approval. And so those are for, you know, we have a process that the board approved in the past where we go through committee, this is a committee with student, I'm sorry, with teacher voice as well as administrative voice. The DCs are involved in this process, it's a multi-step process in order to approve new instructional materials, and so she has included those new instructional materials for your review. One of them is for, sorry, she sent me two sheets, so I've got to go in two places. Those resources are for the dual-credit psychology course, and that's some instructional materials there. There's a program that's an AI-powered program to support our EL learners. By utilizing this resource, it will allow teachers to change grade level course information to a reading level that's appropriate for some of our students that are learning English, as well as science for anatomy and physiology students, increased resource for them, and science, our landscape planning and design, I guess those things change over the course of time. So those are some instructional resources that Dr. Christopher wanted you to have information about. She also wanted to note that new novels will be presented next board meeting for the English courses and will be voted on in June, okay? In addition to new things, I believe in your packet, you saw that there was a new amended, updated calendar, fingers crossed, she feels that we're past winter possible closures. So we held getting that new calendar through and approved until such a time as we felt we were clear of a potential closing for weather. So that's there. Again, the only reason that this is being amended is due to the change in the schedule because of the closure at Central Campus. And then finally, she wanted to make sure that you were aware that we are adding additional courses at Wilco for our students. If you noticed and reviewed those courses, all of them are specific courses that we don't necessarily offer in the high school setting. However, that last class, that culinary arts program, the reason why that's on there is because this would be a capstone class, and we do offer culinary programs here, and we have those programs in our district, we want to provide those, but this would be for the students that wanted to get their food service sanitation license and a little bit more advanced training prior to leaving high school. We ran that course here in the past, but the enrollment has been very low, and that the want for it has been low enough to where a student or two or three that wanted that rigorous culinary arts option could get that program at Wilco. Any questions that I might have the answer to?
No, Ms. Del Ponce, a big supporter of Wilco.
I want to talk a little bit, all of these classes are so good. We get at Wilco, we can experience all the classes while we're there. Is there any way we could add an accelerated CNA option to course registration? A few of our students weaseled our way into there this year, so we have double the opportunity. Second semester, we do sterile processing. So I know that once we're in Wilco, we can try our best to get into the accelerated course, but really, it is double the experience, and I wanted to see if there was any way.
I, I'm looking over at my good friend, Ms. Kishline, who seems to.
They actually have the option to be in the accelerated.
Is it now?
Yeah, it's just going to be, they have to voice that in August at the parent meeting, but they do have the option to be.
Oh, good, okay, cool.
Yes.
Thank you. Let them know.
Yes.
August. Okay, any additional questions?
This is all stuff that's going to come at you next month, especially at that camp, no more interruptions, all right?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. You know, as we sit here, you know, the spring is a really busy time, full of events and celebrations, I think we have pretty much something going on every day, and the kids are excited. You know, as I was walking through the halls today, somebody yelled, "Dr. Green, 30 more wake-ups." I'm like, we got it. So the spring is upon us, but it is probably one of the busiest times of the year for us. So we're really excited. Tomorrow and Wednesday are our state testing days. So just so you guys are aware, tomorrow on Tuesday, the freshmen will have a full day at Lincoln Way North. The sophomores and the juniors will be taking the PSAT and SAT, so they're going to be getting out at 11:30 tomorrow, and then our seniors have community service and college visits.
Yep.
And then on Wednesday, there's no late start, so we'll have the freshmen, actually, are coming over here to East to test. We figured it's just easier to bring them here and keep them here, so they'll be taking the PSAT. The juniors will be coming in to take the Illinois Science Assessment. Both of them will be leaving campus about 11 o'clock, and again, the seniors, along with the sophomores, will have community service and college visit opportunities.
So while our sophomores and juniors are testing tomorrow, and then juniors again on Wednesday, our seniors have a nice little week, and that, that starts off with, my focus part of the principal's report is on our seniors. Our next regular board meeting is May 20th, and our seniors will be done with school by then. Five more weeks our seniors have, so it leads us to really highlight the last five weeks that our, that our seniors have with us here at LTHS. Of course, prom was mentioned earlier in the meeting today, that would be this Saturday. I want to highlight where we are at right now with seniors completing their community service hours. Very proud to mention that right now approximately 843 seniors are complete, that's over 87% of our senior class. There is right around 120 or so that we are still working with, but that is a very strong percentage at this point in the year. Give great credit to several staff members as to why that percentage has increased so much the last couple of years, I would say. I think our overall communication has been really good. There was so much put on our guidance counselors, particularly the last couple of weeks of the school year, we saw that, we recognized that, that added a lot of stress and pressure. And our counselors are still working with students, but we've added more team members to the team, we've started it earlier as well. I really have to thank Travanna Green, one of our deans, as well as Robert Beach, who we approved tonight to be assistant principal, and the last couple of weeks in particular, Mr. Brian Lester, our activities director, because last year, and again this year, we require that seniors who are attending prom, which is approximately around 450 or so, to have those hours complete and entered before they get their ticket. Mr. Lester has been working very hard to make sure that happens. But next week, we have, Tuesday, next Tuesday is our first of two dates that we have for cap and gown pickup. Next Wednesday, we have our top 10% dinner that we will be recognizing our honored seniors. Next Thursday, Mr. Bartley is going to talk to the seniors during study hall about graduation. As we start that conversation, we have senior, senior dinner dance on May 4th, senior awards night on May 15th. Our seniors will take their exams on the 16th and the 17th, and for the first time in recent memory, we're also going to do a walkthrough with the seniors. Their last exam will be sixth period on Friday, May 17th, and then we are going to ask them to go to the gym for seventh period, as we will do a walkthrough in the gym and then out on a Porter Stadium as well. And then also on May 17th, we have a senior sunset, which will be their last day of school. So we are super excited to enjoy the remaining weeks of the class of 2024.
Do you guys have any questions, Les?
I mean, specifically towards finals and AP exams, if you have an AP exam and a final, like how would you tell us, you know, to navigate that?
Yeah, so that's one of the scheduling challenges we had this year. Last year, the schedule with AP, we did not have that conflict. Of course, this, this year, we do, so we are working through some of those individual classes that are being affected by that, so, you know, we'll have more communication through your teachers.
Thank you.
Thanks.
As always, overnight field trips, sometimes they've already taken place, we just want the board to know. We had, you know, Allison Wealthy taking some folks down to Springfield, Illinois, I'm wondering how that went over the past, last week, just a culinary competition. We also sent our boys' track team down to the St. Louis area to participate in Elite Meet, and then upcoming, we're going to take Peoria by storm in Skills USA. I think we're going to, you know, win, win big down there, I'm going to try to spend one day down there on the 27th. But that's just grown, 56 students will be competing in Peoria for Skills USA, pretty neat stuff. We'll flow right into the maintenance report, as always, Mr. Thompson is home ill this evening, so just, you know, gives you a, you know, really interesting idea of just all the things we're doing. One snag we hit that we want to be conscious in the ceiling repair was actually the company that did the demolition did some damage to our server room, and so we're going to have to be very, very careful before we put those ceilings back up, to remember that, you know, to, to check that all that fiber optic and that the, the server room, and of course, the, the vendor is, is going to be doing the replacement. We've been very pleased with CCC, but that is one problem, we just have to make sure it's properly taken care of. Another stag that we hit, very common in, in lots of aged buildings, but we also did find a run of hallway where there is pipe that is encased in hard asbestos. And that hard asbestos is not dangerous until it's broken out and it's airborne. Funny thing about asbestos is one person in construction said to me one time, you could eat that asbestos, it'd be fine, but if you breathe it, you've got trouble, right? That's just the way it is. I'm not convinced that if you eat it, you're fine. But we, we're going to have to do that remediation as well as the masonry work and the carpentry work that needs, that needs to be done. We've also discovered, for example, with exposing those ceilings, some domestic water lines that we believe need to be replaced as well. Good thing to know, when you actually see them. And then, you know, building automation systems at East Campus, we're, we're working on doing some new cabling, doing some updates, you can see a very long list. Those automation systems have so much to do with the cost of energy, especially at East Campus, which is such a huge energy consumer. Any questions on the maintenance report? All right.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our consent agenda items. Do I have a motion to approve, you can send agenda items two to, two through 10. Second, it's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Ms. Johnson. Are there any questions? All right, very non-roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Teas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes.
And we have no policy updates?
But press 114 just arrived, my friends, so I don't want to let you down, it's, you know, we'll be doing policy probably next month.
All right. Just arrived isn't today?
No, about, about two or three weeks ago.
All right, do I have a motion to approve action on student number 2050342?
I think that was.
What, what, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, I thought we were, okay.
We just, we pulled that.
I pulled that, I'm sorry. All right, do I have a motion to approve the part-time worker's schedule for 2024, 2025?
Some of.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions on this? Roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Teas?
Yes.
Lopez.
Yes. Do I have a motion to approve the licensed personnel positions for the 2024, 2025 school year? I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Ms. Lopez Coniva and second by Mr. Thies. All right, bro call.
Can we?
I'm sorry, any questions?
Yeah, questions about this, so we're approving another assistant principal position.
You are.
Motion, okay. So Mr. Beach, just for clarification, curriculum instruction, okay? Operations and then student services.
Right.
Mr. Bartley.
So operations, Mr. Bartley, we, we assume unless he applies for student services would remain as operations. Then we're adding assistant principal for student services, really to fill in a gap, it's something we've worked with our union on. We've noticed, you know, one of the primary pieces of that portfolio will be ELL, having administrator directly over ELL, and Lee has been a champion this year as the world language department chair, but those needs are just growing and growing, and the needs are not just in the area of teaching language, they bring with them medical needs, housing needs, family needs, that also gets into discipline, it gets into restorative justice, our efforts in things like BIC, and then our efforts with credit recovery as well. And just something that we've worked on and worked with Dr. Johnson on, the, the idea of coming into the main office, and I know this sounds simple, we're coming in the main office, and, and when our administrators are evaluating, they are observing all the time in classes, and so we also believe that this complement administrators will let you see. but coming in the main office and, and when our administrators are evaluating, they are observing all the time in classes. And so we also believe that this complement administrators will let you stop in the main office and there will always be a principal or assistant principal present. And then a clarity about, okay, student services, I see this person, operations, I see this person, academics, I see this person.
Are there any other questions? Bro call.
Teas?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the tentative amended budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four?
I agree.
Second, it's been motioned by Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw. Roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Teas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the resolution authorizing intervention in proceeding before the Will County Board of Review and Illinois Property Tax Appeal Board?
Someone? Right.
It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Teas?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the seal code and strike parking lots and pathways at our east campus and Afield? I'll make that motion, second. Motion by Ms. Lopez Caniva and second by Dr. Shaw, are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Teas?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the emergency fit asbestos removal?
Someone?
It's been motioned by Mr. Travis and second by Mr. Thies. Bro call.
Travis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Teas?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to go into closed session number two to accidentally discuss the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity under ILCS one twenty slash two C one and collective, collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees in chapter five of the ILCS one twenty slash two C two.
Someone?
And I'll second that. It's been motioned by Mr. Thies and second by Lopez Caniva, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Teas?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Time rubber session ended at nine twenty-five, and we'll just take a five-minute break here.